Can you hear me?
Yes, I think we are ready to start. I'll go ahead and put everyone on the screen. All right.
Okay. So, good evening and welcome to our August 11th, 2020 Vista Consolidated Meeting. Meeting is now called back to order. This meeting is being conducted utilizing teleconferencing and electronic means consistent with State of California Executive Order N-29-20. So with that, we'll have a roll call by our City Clerk Cathy Valdez.
Thank you, Mayor. Please state that you're here when I call your name. Mayor Ritter?
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Here.
Councilmember Franklin?
Present.
Councilmember Green?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras?
Present.
All members are present. Also joining on the call are City Manager Patrick Johnson and City Attorney Darrell Piper.
Okay, so in accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. For members of the public that are participating through Zoom, you can raise your hand to indicate you'd like to speak by clicking the Raise Hand feature on your screen or by pressing star nine on your phone. Instructions on how to join the meeting through Zoom are provided on the Agenda cover sheet. Staff will be lowering everyone's hand right now to start the meeting. So we will announce when to raise your hand if you'd like to make a comment on the specific item being discussed. You may only speak on an item once, and public comment is limited to three minutes. So with that, I'll go with the approval of the agenda by our City Manager Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes to the agenda this evening.
Okay, and with that, I'll have our City Attorney Darrell Piper bring us out of closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council did meet in closed session this evening to discuss the items on CS-1. No action was taken. There is nothing to be reported.
Okay. We have two presentations this evening, and the first one is our City Manager Patrick Johnson is going to provide a COVID-19 update. And I think somebody is not viewed mute when you're not talking. Maybe I won't hear the background noise. Let's hear him. Thank you. Okay, so, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I thought I'd provide a very brief overview of some of the programs and the policies that have taken place or been implemented since our last meeting on June 23rd. One of the things I wanted to highlight was the Vista Is Open campaign, and you can find that at our website at vistasisopen.com. And that is a program that we launched to allow businesses to register and showcase their businesses, and I want to tell you that it's going very well. So I'd encourage the public to check that out, and the reason being, find out all the businesses that are open during this time and the ones that have modified services and be able to support Vista businesses. Per the city council's direction, early in the month in July, we issued the Our Vista Special Business Edition that was mailed to all the residents and businesses. So that showcased a lot of the COVID information that businesses needed, as well as showcased a number of our businesses per year correction in different sectors, and so that was well received. And as you all know, in June, you passed a temporary order that allowed restaurants and breweries to be able to operate outdoors. And I'm pleased to say that we've spoken to 66 restaurants and breweries, and of those 66, 30 have implemented the outdoor dining usage. So we're very pleased that that number, and we're still talking to people, but certainly having 30 businesses open in some format as opposed to shutting down is great for Vista and great for the businesses. Following that temporary order that you signed in June and July, I signed a temporary emergency order to relax the outdoor restrictions for personal services, barber shops, salons, as well as gyms and fitness areas. So specifically, economic development has reached out to 24 of those types of businesses, and I'm pleased to say that 14 have implemented outdoor use. So another 14 that are in business that otherwise wouldn't be. We've also provided, as you know, the stand-up assistance to businesses in the form of webinars, workshops, and presentations, and we have a new four webinars that are going to be coming up. And so that'll be Manufacturing in the Age of COVID, Retail During COVID, and then there'll be a four-part series that What Does It All Mean?, that they'll break it down, and these are one-hour formats. And more information will be sent out by Economic Development on that. And I do want to thank our Economic Development Department, specifically Kevin Hamm, our Communications Division, as well as our Community Development Department for working with the businesses and not only notifying them and working with them through the policies and the processes, but also for getting them open during this time. So thank you to those folks in the city specifically. There's a number of people that work, but those departments in particular had a big role. One of the things that all of you know that's not shut down during this time is our senior center in terms of meal production. While we're not producing congregate meals, we are still providing meals, lunch, and dinner for all seniors. They can pick them up, or we'll be happy to deliver them. And one of the new things is the Free Weekend Meal Bag that has been very successful and very well received from the seniors that are over 65. And this includes fresh produce, two light lunches, and milk. And so those seniors that aren't able to get out and drive around or walk around to get fresh produce, they're able to get fresh food on the weekend now, not just the meals on the weekday. So that is very good news. Some other good news is that the state, and as you know, the county, is allotted $1.8 million to the city in CARESAC funding, and we were, since the last meeting, the state has notified us, and another $1.2 million has been allotted in CARESAC funding. So for a total of about $3 million that we can use to be reimbursed for payroll expenses in some cases, telework, that's what I was thinking, telework options, as well as sanitation, social distancing, and then the economic development support that I mentioned earlier can all be used with those funds. So we're very pleased. That is some good news from a city perspective. And then in terms of COVID statistics, I just wanted to mention that there were 32,975 positive cases within the County of San Diego as of yesterday, late yesterday, and 594 deaths from that. And in Vista, we have had so far 843 positive cases, and that amounts to less than 1% of our population. So just some statistics from the county as of last night. This concludes the brief presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have or try to answer those questions. Yes, Councilman Franklin?
Can you tell us anything about the trajectory of new infections? Are they on the decline?
I can say that as of last week, I believe they stabilized or were slightly on the decline for a few days, but I don't have the stats in front of me for the last two to three weeks. But I do know that the county made an announcement last week that we were going in the right direction for that period of time.
Councilmember Green?
And I know from like a school opening standpoint, there is a 14-day, then a 14-day, you know, additional waiting period or whatever. Where are we at if we were to say, hey, we're at day seven of 14, and then we, I mean, I know it gets reset by one, you know, one finding, but do we know kind of how we're looking towards that, or is that?
Yeah, I don't have the specifics, but I think we had two good days, and then we slipped back into that, that they call it. I think in talking to this Unified School District, obviously, they're having teachers in the classroom so that when and if the triggers are lifted, the governor allows students to go back physically, that they already have their teachers in the classroom to be able to do that. But I think realistically going forward, it's going to be quite some time before those 14-day triggers are reached.
Yeah, I know. I have a child that we just registered, actually, this Unified, and that's kind of why I was asking, is they give you the option of the in-person or the virtual, and then, you know, when does any of that happen? And I think a lot of parents in our community are, you know, just kind of wondering, we're planning on being virtual for a while, so I think that's kind of how it's, you know, looking kind of across the board. But thank you for the information.
I think it's realistic to figure that most likely the schools will be in session from a virtual standpoint through the end of the calendar year.
Councilmember Contreras?
Thank you, Patrick, so much for updating us and the public. I just want to say it's fantastic to see a lot of these businesses operating outside. I, you know, have not stopped consuming a lot of good Vista food, so it's been great to be able to go and just offer support to our local businesses. I wanted to get an update on how many hand washing stations we have at this point. I love them. I don't have to go into the restroom. You know, I was at Luis Duran the other day playing basketball. Hands can get pretty dirty. Just go over, wash my hands, and I'm good. So I don't know if maybe, you know, we have plateaued and we don't need anymore, or if there's opportunity for, you know, more hand washing stations or what the case is. I just kind of wanted to get an update on that.
Yeah, I think from a hand washing station perspective, I think in late March, we had ordered through the county, free of charge, eight or nine hand washing stations that we placed at different facilities and parks, and we have not added any from that time. So eight or nine, I think, is the number.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to our next presentation. Our next presentation is Fire Chief Ned Vanderpoel, who's going to present the Fire Department update. And so I don't see him on here. Kathy can put him on.
Chris is going to bring him on for us in just a moment here.
There he is.
All right. Are you ready, Mayor?
We're ready.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. It is a pleasure to be here to represent the 92 women and men of the Vista Fire Department. I will be providing a fire season forecast as well as an overview and update on the Fire Department, highlighting some of the exceptional work and compassionate service that's provided 24 hours a day. For the fire season, we are anticipating a normal large fire potential throughout the region for August and September. However, you'll note there that in October and November, we are expecting an above-normal fire potential for large fires. This is due to a high-pressure system that is expected to set up off the California coast, which will result in above-normal temperatures, below-normal rainfall, and an increase in the San Ana wind events in October and November. And as you all know, those are really what drive those large fires for us. So that's the fire weather forecast. The Fuel Moisture Report is another thing that we look at in the fire service, and what that is indicating is that we are continuing to see a drop in that fire moisture content. One of the reasons for that is that we have the various fuel moisture that we get readings throughout the area, throughout the region, basically, and those are all indicating that temperatures or the temperatures that are above normal are driving those lower fuel moistures. So that's one of the factors that drives it. Also, due to the warm weather that we had kind of mid-July there, between July 9 and 13, that really drove some of those low, those low fuel moistures as well. So that's the, that's kind of the fire season update for you. On the emergency medical services side of things, I'm happy to report that the American Heart Association has awarded the Vista Fire Department with a Gold Award. The Gold Award looks at four different components. The first component that it looks at is how quickly we get a 12-lead EKG on a patient. So this is something that we strive for very rapidly in an assessment of a cardiac patient. The second component is how quickly that 12-lead is transmitted to the hospital and notification is made to the appropriate receiving facility. Third is how we, from the time of the calls to the first medical contact to when a device is in place. And then fourth, the final component of that is basically when the stent is, when the stent is put into place. So the criteria for that is 120 minutes from first medical contact to when that stent is put into place. So that's been, that's a really great accomplishment for the Fire Department. It really goes to the exceptional service provided from the paramedics assessing and treating the patient appropriately, to the engineers that are driving expeditiously and safely to the call to get there as soon as possible. For the EKG trial, we are looking at new EKG devices for replacing the ones that we have currently, which have reached the end of their service life. So we're working with the cities of San Marcos, Escondido, and Carlsbad. The idea there is that if we all are using the same device, that will help in the continuity of care that we provide, as well as realizing some economies of scale in that area. The final piece there is COVID, and obviously, COVID has really changed how we operate in the fire service. Everything from how dispatch answers and dispatches calls to how we respond to vegetation fires and strike teams. So those are all things that are impacting how we operate. The, the big difference for us is we're responding to calls now, and those calls are happening at a point where we arrive on scene, and instead of all of us going in together as a large group, depending on the type of call, we'll either send one person in, or maybe even the patient will come out and meet us. So those are some of the things that we've put into place, very, very different operations in the field, all designed to keep the public safe and obviously keeping the firefighters safe as well. So we're following all the best practices that are happening out there, as well as really on the leading edge of a lot of things that are happening, a lot of good practices that are being put into place. Staffing and equipment-wise, happy to report that we are fully staffed, aside from one administrative opening, but it's really good to go into, be in a season like this with COVID going on and all the uncertainty that's going on around, around that, and also being ready for fire season. So I'm happy to report that we are fully staffed. We also have received a new ladder truck, so we have a 107-foot aerial apparatus that's going to be going in at fire station number six, and it will be replacing the Sutkin aerial apparatus that we recently sold. It'll actually be leaving tomorrow on a 3,500-mile journey to Maine on the Canadian border where it would be going into service. The good news there is that we are able to sell it for $370,000, which is significantly more than we usually sell our used apparatus for. So it's definitely good to have a new apparatus in service and be putting that, putting that into place. So we've been doing a lot of training on that new ladder truck that we have, as well as training for our new hires and our probationary employees and getting ready for the wildland fire season. So happy to report those as well. Fire prevention, SB 1205, if you remember, Senate Bill 1205 from last year, we reported that we maintain, we reached the 100% compliance on the Senate bill, and that puts a lot of work on the fire prevention personnel. So we achieved that compliance in our last fiscal year, and we're already working on this fiscal year. And the goal for us in this fiscal year is to, we're going to start working with the engine companies as well to have them assisting on the apartment inspections so that our fire prevention personnel can be using their skill and expertise to go on the more technical inspections, getting those accomplished. On the vegetation management side of things, we've been doing the vegetation management inspections. We have 21 parcels that still require clearing, so fire prevention personnel are working with the city attorney's office to make sure that we get those cleared. Last year, we ended up abating two parcels, and we're shooting for that goal, if not better, this year. So that's what, that's the plan and the vegetation management, and we're well ahead of schedule of where we were last year, so that's good to report as well. For the strategic plan, we have a strategic plan that we finalized not too long ago, and so we've been working on that process internally. I'm happy to report that we have a captain coming into administration on Monday to help really spearhead this project and lead it forward as we get those goals and items accomplished. Accreditation, we have our accreditation process about 90% complete, and we're using, our peer review team is reviewing the documentation now. They were supposed to be out here in June, but obviously that was changed, so they're doing the reviews remotely, and we don't have a new site visit scheduled with them yet, but we hope to get them out here to finalize the accreditation process. And then finally, the standards of cover, we have that final draft completed, and the goal now is to review it and then put those practices into place. The Standards of Cover Relief drives our operational, operational decisions, and it gives us guidance for the next few years in how we, how we distribute and how we use our resources. So that is the conclusion of my report, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Green, sorry.
That's okay. I just have a few questions for you. First of all, thank you so much for your report, Captain Vanderpoel, and thank you for everything that our Fire Department does for our city. We really appreciate you. First question's an easy one. The Gold Award from the American Heart Association, congratulations. Is that the highest possible award you can get from the American Heart Association?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Sure, if there was a platinum one, I wanted to make sure that we were on fire, you know what I mean? So the gold is good. Number two, I know you said we were fully staffed. We always worry about our firefighters out there, especially in these times right now. How's everything going? I mean, it's, I know you said your, you know, techniques and things are different, sending one at a time. How are our firefighters? Are they all safe? Have they contracted any illnesses or kind of what's going on? Because kind of check.
Sure. Appreciate the question. Yeah, so the, as far as our practices that we have in place, we have all the PPE that's necessary, so we've been really good about being, anticipating what the needs are. So through the county, through our own internal processes, we've been able to purchase all the PP that's necessary. So when it comes into, if all five firefighters have to go into a house for a certain type of call, they have the equipment necessary to do that. Like I said, we've also had those best practices in place, so we're following all the industry standards and guidelines that are being set forth.
Nice. And everybody's at work right now, working hard for our city, so that's awesome. The last question I had for you, and I'm glad you brought it up, was the SB 1205 thing and the inspections. I know they kind of dropped that on us last year mid-year, and we had to scramble to get into compliance. With COVID, I would think it's going to be even harder to meet the requirement for inspecting all the buildings. What are we doing from a firefighting standpoint, and have there been any, you know, guidelines from the state that says, hey, since you can't access, we don't require compliance? Or is it like, hey, you got to do it no matter what?
No, great question. And specifically to SB 1205, we are not doing any of the skilled nursing facilities that are part of the mandates, so we're able to get all the apartments done, we're able to get all the motels and hotels, but the skilled nursing facilities, we're not going in there because of the concern there. They're not letting visitors in of any sort. So those we did not do. Now, at some point, we're going to have to go in there and do the inspections anyway, but we'll be working with the facility managers on those for sure.
Okay, and we're doing good as far as inspectors, and I know you said you have the engine companies working on it. It looks like we're going to be able to at least accomplish whatever it is we can accomplish from that standpoint.
Correct.
Okay, that's it. Thank you so much for your time, Ned. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Oh, Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Chief. That was a great report. I just want to follow up on one of the comments you made about having fully staffed, but you still have one admin position open. Which position is that?
The Administrative Assistant. We had Yasmeen Royka retired.
Okay, okay. It was sad to see her go, but I hope she has a good retirement. And I want to say congratulations on the award from your Gold Award. That's excellent, and I'm sure the accreditation will be, will be excellent again. I wanted to ask about the 2020 to 2025 Strategic Plan. Is that going to be ready for distribution to us here pretty soon?
Yes, it is.
Okay, good. I look forward to seeing that. Excellent. Well, thank you very much. Great job.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? I see nobody else. I would say thank you, our chief. We appreciate it, your report. That was a good report. Looking forward to not very many fires.
As are we.
Yes, so in the next couple of months. So anyway, so I guess that's, that's it. I guess we'll, so that we'll move on. But thank you for coming and giving us a report.
You're welcome.
Okay, with that, we move on to the Consent Calendar. The recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar, and any member of the public may remove an item by using the Raise Hand feature or pressing star nine now. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following adoption of the calendar. We have 19 consent items this evening. Do any of the city councilmembers want to remove any item? And I don't see anybody waving. No, okay. So do we have any requests from the public, our City Clerk?
We do not have any requests.
Okay, so seeing none, then I will close the public comment portion of the consent calendar and entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve the consent calendar as presented.
I'll second.
Tie.
Karina wins.
Karina wins, okay. A motion by Deputy Mayor and second by Karina. Councilmember Contreras. Okay, so please, how do we do this? Please cast, not cast your votes.
I'll do a roll call vote.
There you go. I was trying to think of the word.
Thank you. I'll call your name, and if you please state your vote, I'd appreciate it. Mayor Ritter?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
Aye.
The consent calendar passes unanimously.
Okay, and with that, we move on to, we have two discussion items this evening. The first is update on the implementation of the Strategic Plan to Address Homelessness. And our Housing Manager Sylvia Solis Daniels will be providing the staff report. If any members of the public wish to speak on this item, they may indicate so by raising the raising hand feature or pressing star nine now. Speakers will be called upon after the staff presentation. So we'll turn it over to Sylvia.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening's item is to provide an update on the implementation of the Strategic Plan to Address Homelessness. This is also known as the Strategic Plan. This includes the consideration of three agreements with various service providers. The Strategic Plan, slide two, please. The Strategic Plan was adopted in March 2020, and since its adoption, staff has begun implementation with securing additional funding sources, selecting service providers through request for proposal process, continuing encampment cleanup activities, and conducting internal task force meetings. In June, staff submitted a permanent housing local allocation, PHLA grant application to request the city's 2019-2020 allocation of $408,882 to support activities in the Strategic Plan to Address Homelessness. Slide three. And to provide a recap of the Strategic Plan, the purpose of the plan is to implement successful programs and practices that promote assistance to those who are experiencing homelessness while also protecting all community members' health, safety, and welfare. The three main goals of the plan are to prevent homelessness, improve the quality of life, and reduce homelessness. Programs that fall under Goal One, prevent homelessness, focus on promoting self-sufficiency and stabilizing housing and/or employment for people who are at risk of becoming homeless. This includes the Homeless Prevention Program and the Home Share Coordination Services Program. Programs that fall under Goal Two, improve the quality of life, focus on assisting those who are experiencing homelessness and mitigating public health and safety impacts. This includes encampment cleanup, legislative advocacy, and the Internal Homelessness Task Force. Programs that fall under Goal Number Three, reduce homelessness, focuses on long-term solutions to connect people to housing in order to make a homeless, in order to make homelessness a rare, brief, and one-time experience. This includes securing shelter beds and the full-time social worker reflect fund. And slide four. Back one slide. There we go. And then I wanted to quickly summarize the activities that have been ongoing since the plan's adoption. The encampment cleanup activities have yielded over 58 tons of waste cleaned from the biological preserve areas throughout the city, including the properties along Hacienda Drive, Vale Terrace Drive, and Sierra Verde Drive. Cleanup efforts have created repurposed land, including 6.4 acres with 0.7 miles of new active-use trails for public use on wastewater-eating properties. The Internal Homelessness Task Force has met monthly to discuss how each department is addressing homelessness. Following the contract execution with the contract social worker provider, that individual will join and collaborate with the task force. Additionally, staff has been working to implement the Strategic Plan program. The Home Share Coordination Services contract is currently under negotiation with Elder Help of San Diego. This organization unfortunately has been significantly impacted by the pandemic due to their target population and their vulnerability for exposure to COVID-19. Staff is working with Elder Help, and we are working, we are working to identify technology resources to proceed with intake screening while limiting their exposure to COVID-19. We expect executing a contract with them this fall. An RFP was also released to provide a selected provider for the homelessness prevention program and the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Rental Assistance Fund program. Staff recommends contracting with North County Lifeline to provide these services. North County Lifeline has a stabilization, has experience with stabilization services and prevention programs, including financial wellness classes and activities to help clients create a path towards independence through case management, financial literacy classes, and stabilization support, including rental assistance. Staff will work directly with North County Lifeline to begin these services by the end of August. to begin these services by the end of August. North County Lifeline has more than 38 years of experience as a community service provider and will provide a thorough application evaluation process. The secure shelter bed contract has been drafted with Interface, who is the fiscal agent for the Alliance Shelter Network, and is ready to execute a contract to prioritize up to 10 beds per night in existing low-barrier shelters for people experiencing homelessness in Vista. And the full-time social worker contract, staff has released, or staff released an RFP to identify a provider for a full-time social worker with flex funds. And the staff, our staff and the sheriff's department scored the proposals, including a scoring matrix, which was included in the RFP. Staff is recommending executing the contract with Exodus Recovery to provide a dedicated, full-time social worker to specifically work with the city to provide outreach, case management, data collection, and collaboration with the county health department, the sheriff's department, and other homeless service providers for the city of Vista. Exodus Recovery has 12 years of experience as a behavioral health provider and will provide the city with access to extensive resources, including churches, clinical services, care facilities, housing, and ongoing case management services. The full-time social worker will provide data, anecdotal stories, and success stories, details of the outreach and case management process, and will share this with the internal homelessness task force as well as council. This concludes staff's presentation, and I am available to answering questions.
Okay, so does anybody have any questions? Deputy Mayor, are you, are you fixing your computer? Do you have questions?
I was just, I was just going to comment. I was trying to turn my microphone back on. I'm working with my phone here. My computer's not working, so I have my little tiny phone, so.
Oh, okay.
Um, I just wanted to say thank you for this report and all the work that is going into this uh, program for our community. This is something that we've been working really hard on for the last couple of years, and it's going to be a very meaningful approach to this issue in our community. And I can't say thank you enough to staff and to our regional partners for, for going down this road with us. I think that what we are doing here in Vista with this program, this homeless master plan, the funding that we have allocated uh, ourselves to this, I think it's an example for other agencies in the region to take a look at what we are doing while still trying to advocate for regional solutions and regional dollars. But in the meantime, not just sitting back and waiting for somebody to come along on their white horse and save us, but we are taking steps in our own community to help our own people. And it's just, I'm so very proud of this council and of our staff for doing this. And this is a, a great report. It really gives out the details of what we're doing and what we're in the process of doing. And, and with that, Madam Mayor, I would like to uh, move that we approve staff's recommendation for numbers two through six and adopting the resolutions as they've been presented to us.
Hey, do I have any other? Councilmember Green?
Yes, I just have a couple of questions before I second that, and I guess statements as well. Um, when I'm looking at our actual resolutions, one of them is in the amount of $230,000 to North County Lifeline from the CDBG COVID-19 Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Um, and the other one is $250,000 to North County Lifeline for the homeless prevention pilot program. So it looks like it's a total of $480,000 going to North County Lifeline for homelessness prevention and rental assistance. Is that all going to be one program? Or are those two separate programs for those two separate funding sources?
So that is two separate programs um, that are similar and have um, similar requirements, but they are two separate programs due to the nature of the two separate funding pot.
Okay, and then it looks like we're allocating $200,000 to Interfaith, which is for our low-barrier housing beds that we have available. Is that correct?
Correct.
Cool, and then the $144,000 per year for social workers. So no, um, I think it's great. I think we're doing a lot. I think like Deputy Mayor Rigby said, this should be a shining example to other cities of what type of strategic plan we can have, because we do care about our homeless. We do want to make sure that we have resources for them, and we try to help them, um, you know, get back in housing and get back to where they once were. So with that, I will second the motion and um, it's like.
Councilmember Franklin?
Well, I just want to uh, compliment the city staff on their execution of the plan and uh, you know, the fact that we picked up as much trash as we have uh, and that we have replaced what, what had become, it was supposed to be uh, environmental preserve. It had become a landfill. The fact that we have cleaned it up and that we have put trails in for our residents, we have reclaimed and re-beautified pieces of our city. Uh, that's what this is about. It's also about helping people that need a, a hand up. Uh, and it's about uh, helping solve the problem. Uh, we've invested, uh, I think we're going to be over 3.2 or 3.3 million uh, all told uh, in our homelessness plan. It's a big investment, one of the biggest that we're making as a city at anything. Uh, and so, you know, we're, uh, the staff deserves a lot of credit and, and also my fellow members of the council, thank you uh, for all of your work on this.
Councilmember Green?
I was just thumbs-upping, ready for a vote.
Oh, Deputy Mayor Rigby, did you have anything? Oh, sorry, Councilmember Contreras.
Yeah, sure, no, I just, you know, I wanted to second uh, what John Franklin, uh, with Councilmember Franklin, uh, was saying, you know, it, this has been a long discussion, a very long discussion, and we had to come together, um, you know, looking at what personally, you know, what we were advocating for. And, and when it comes to council, it's a team effort. And so, you know, we each um, went up to bat to fight for what we thought was right, and we came out together, I think, with a really solid plan. Um, that's gonna, you know, we're, we're testing some programs out that thankfully we received, you know, additional funds um, that allowed us to kind of take a different approach than we would have if it would have just been our uh, funding. So I'm really, really thankful to staff, to all my colleagues uh, on council for the endless discussion, because we do have a wide range of options at this point that we're putting forward as far as solutions um, to, to improve the quality of life for those that are experiencing homelessness and those in the community who want to help uh, those that are experiencing homelessness. And so, you know, from high barrier to low barrier, um, we, we definitely have a dynamic range of tools um, that we've come together and said, you know what? This is the right thing to do. Um, because when we talk about low barrier versus high barrier, you know, we could have 20 solutions for change here. We could have 20 Operation Hopes, but we still have that segment of the, the population experiencing homelessness that's not going to fit into those types of programs. Um, because when it comes to low barrier, I was talking to someone who's a homeless outreach coordinator, and she's like, you know, it's not just about um, the drug use. It's also about mental health, behavioral health, and that could um, that could stop someone from being accepted into a high-barrier program. So, you know, I, I really applaud our efforts here, and I know none of us got everything that we wanted, but again, together, we, I think we've really brought a comprehensive a vision uh, for how we want to steer uh, our community towards a better quality of life. And like Councilmember Franklin said, we are already seeing that along the Hacienda corridor. Um, and it's just incredible. And I, I can't wait uh, till we have everything nice and done and, you know, I could go out there and, you know, take a, a walk, and it's going to be a different experience than the first time I went. So that's for sure. So thank you so much to everybody.
I actually agree with Councilmember Contreras. I agree with you very much, and I'm with Councilmember Franklin. And, and it looks great where they cleaned all the, uh, uh, out the trees and everything and made that trail down there. Oh, my gosh, I get lots of comments on it. Um, I just think, I'm very proud of the plan that we've put together and taken the lead of either, actually from other cities, that we've taken the lead to do something for, for all different types of the homeless. So um, I think that that's really important. So do I see anybody else that wants to talk? Looking, looking, looking. Okay, don't see that. So then I would say, um, City Clerk, do we have any members of the public that want to speak on the item?
We've not received any requests, so we'll go ahead and close opportunity to provide oral comments on this item.
Okay, so then um, we have a motion by Deputy Mayor and a second by Councilmember Green. And so um, City Clerk Valdez, you can call the roll call.
Mayor Ritter?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rigby? Just need you to, there you go.
Okay. Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
The big aye for me.
The item passes unanimously.
Wonderful. Okay, that takes us to our second item, which is proclamation of the 100th anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment granting women the right to vote. Congratulations to the women, yay! Okay, Deputy Mayor Rigby is asked to have this on the agenda, so I'm going to ask her to introduce the item. And then if any members of the public wish to speak on it, they can indicate so by using the raise the hand feature or by pressing star nine now. And then we'll call the speakers after the presentation.
Excellent, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I think it's important to look back at the history that we've had, and to me, it's, it's incredible that women were not given the same vote that men were given. Um, even though women were a driving force in their communities and their families, their voices were ignored. Um, and, and I appreciate all of the women who came before us who struggled through the suffrage movement to get us the right to vote. I, I don't know that a lot of people understand that women went to jail just for speaking their mind, just for being in public. Um, for saying that they wanted the right to vote. They wanted to have a say. They would show up at meetings that they weren't invited to. Um, and it, it, there were a lot of people who were hurt physically and emotionally in the, in the years that it took to get the 19th Amendment ratified. Or, and even the 19th Amendment passed through Congress, because my understanding, looking through history, was that uh, it took a couple of tries through Congress to get it passed. And then for it to be ratified and become a constitutional amendment, it had to have so many uh, members, so many states had to ratify it through their legislatures. And so I think it's important that we remember who we are as a people, as a nation, the history that we've had, and what it's taken for us to get to where we are, to where we have a city council now that is a majority female city council. Uh, 100 years ago, that would have been unheard of. It would have been laughed at. And uh, the people that have come before us have worked really very hard. And I know that I do, and I believe my colleagues do. We strive very hard to honor the women who came before us in our actions and, and how we represent the people, and we want to make their struggle worth it. So with that, I wanted, like, like to read this proclamation, and then I would make a motion that we uh, approve this proclamation and that we would all sign it for the public record. So the proclamation reads, whereas on August 18th, 2020, Americans will celebrate the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution, granting women the right to vote. And whereas we honor the bold, courageous, and powerful women who led this movement and whose stories cannot be lost to history. And whereas California holds a special place in history of women's suffrage as California women gained the right to vote with the ratification of the Eighth Amendment to the California Constitution in 1911, nearly a decade before women gained the right to vote nationally. Whereas the fact that women today are active in local, state, and national government and are running for office in unprecedented numbers reminds us that we all follow in the footsteps of these resolute American suffragists. Whereas we commemorate the efforts of those groundbreaking women and we reaffirm our commitment to equality under the law for all Americans. Whereas we honor the trailblazing American women who have fought for and achieved incredible gains in equality since the ratification of the 19th Amendment. The hard-fought accomplishments of these women have strengthened our economy, our communities, and our families, and have enriched the American spirit. Whereas their resolve, innovation, leadership, passion, and compassion have changed the world and continue to inspire future generations of women and ensure that all Americans can fully participate in America's constitutional republic. Whereas we ask residents, businesses, and civic institutions to celebrate the 100th anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment granting women the right to vote, commemorate the efforts of those groundbreaking activists, celebrate the remarkable achievements of women in our community, and reaffirm our commitment to equality under the law for all Americans, further promoting the core values of our constitutional republic as promised by the Constitution of the United States of America. Now therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council do hear my proclaim and honor August 18th, 2020 as the 100th anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment granting women the right to vote. Madam Mayor, thank you very much. I would move that we approve this uh, and sign it into the record.
I would second that, so.
On 30.
Thank you.
Well, and I, and I'll just tell you that 1920, right? Was when they, they got the right to vote?
Right, 1920.
That was only 23 years before I was born, and my grandmother worked on that, you know, fought for the right for women to vote. So, I mean, it's, it's hard to believe that, that it was only 23 years and then I was born.
Take you to your grandmother.
It wasn't that long ago.
No.
I'm very proud to be able to, you know, vote, and I think that that's a great thing. So congratulations on that. So anybody else want to talk? I'm seeing, oh, Councilmember Contreras?
Yeah, you know what? I, I just, this is a darn good uh, proclamation. I, I just can't. Thank you so much, Deputy Mayor Rigby, for bringing this forward. Uh, you know, we're in a, a national conversation right now about how we get to a more perfect union. Um, and, you know, looking back at our history uh, and looking at how we have moved forward to ensure equity um, and that there's still more conversation um, and more actions necessary for us to become that more perfect union, right? But I just, it's incredible. Thank you so much for bringing this forward. I know um, it makes me proud. It makes me proud to hear the, all these words. Uh, so thanks, I really appreciate it. And I'm sure the city of Vista, everybody appreciates it too.
I hope so, I hope so.
So um, Council, uh, City Clerk Valdez, do we have any members of the public that want to speak on this?
Actually, I believe Councilmember Franklin wants to.
I see it, I see his fingers now.
I just wanted to join uh, all of you in congratulating Deputy Mayor Rigby for bringing this proclamation forward. Um, and I, takes me back to uh, my elementary education, Susan B. Anthony, Elizabeth Katie Stanton, Ida Wells. Uh, just want to recognize all the leading suffragettes and all that they did uh, to bring equality to the vote and enthusiastically support this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing nobody now.
I may as well say, oh, sorry, not a minute.
Go for it.
I just figured, I was raised by a single mom, married to a woman for 22 years, got three daughters. They are the strongest people that I know. So props to all the women 100 years ago fighting. Their voices are heard, magnified, and acted on daily in our city. So thank you Deputy Mayor for bringing this forward, and how proud Grandma would be of you, Mayor Ritter, come on!
Right, okay, let's see, okay. So now, City Clerk, do you have anybody else who wants to speak?
We do not have any um, public that would like to speak on this, so we'll go ahead and close opportunity for public comment on this item.
Okay, um, Deputy Mayor, did you have anything else you want to say? Or do we need a motion?
I did make a motion.
Oh, yeah, and Councilmember Contreras seconded, I believe.
Yes.
So then I will have a roll call vote.
Thank you. Mayor Ritter?
Oh yes, aye.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Absolutely, aye.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Big aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
Even bigger aye.
It passes unanimously.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, with that, that brings us to our oral communications. This is an opportunity for the public to comment on agency-related matters that are not on the agenda. If any members of the public wish to address the city council, they may indicate so by using the raise the hand feature or by pressing star nine now. Uh, City, uh, City Clerk Valdez, do you have any members of the public that wish to provide oral communication?
Yes, we do. Our first speaker will be, um, Barbara Gordon. Barbara, give me just a moment to bring you in. Okay, Barbara, go ahead and speak. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Um, I am the Adult Advisor for the County Office of Education Friday Night Live Hispanic Youth Group. Regarding the supervisor's Fletcher's letter that was proposed at last Wednesday's Board Supervisor meeting, our youth were very disappointed a supervisor would consider allowing marijuana businesses in the county. The youth want youth to know they are working hard to change the perception among their peers that marijuana is harmless. Our youth recognize marijuana is a problem in their community. A ban on dispensaries reduces the availability and access of marijuana among their peers. Our youth know of teens that have obtained marijuana from dispensaries. The newly released 2010 Sandag Substance Abuse Monitoring Report states that a 20-year high of lifetime and self-reported drug use from teens. Marijuana remains the drug of choice for youth interviewed with 57% testing positive, 76 of those youth reported vaping flavored nicotine and 73% for vaping marijuana. 74% of the youth reported having tried all three drugs, alcohol, tobacco and marijuana, with the average age around 13. Cities councils have the responsibility to look out for all residents, not just one industry. Thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you. Next will be caller ending in 7234. Caller, you could go ahead and start. Hold on. Are you there? Caller, are you there? There you go. Okay. If you please state your name and the spelling.
Sure. My name is Terri Anne Skelly, T E R R I hyphen A N N S K E L L Y. I'm a single mom raising three young adult sons whom I'm encouraging to get a good education and job and to stay healthy, which has become increasingly challenging now. One of my goals is to make sure that young people have the scientific facts they need to know about marijuana. Since the pot industry's marketing campaigns and normalization efforts have led to a record number of kids to view pot as harmless. A study in the journal Drug and Alcohol Dependents found that young people who are exposed to marijuana advertising have higher rates of marijuana use and are less likely to view it as potentially dangerous. Yet numerous studies demonstrate that pot can be very dangerous, especially for users under 25. This is my reason for contacting you tonight. The marijuana available from Vista's pot shops is much stronger than previous decades. Marijuana concentrates used in waxes, dabs, edibles and the very popular vape pens can contain more than 75% of tetrahydrocannabinol or THC. The risks of physical dependence, addiction and other negative consequences increase with exposure to high concentrates of THC. Higher doses of THC are more likely to produce anxiety, agitation, paranoia and psychosis. Frequent marijuana use during adolescence is associated with changes in the areas of the brain involved in attention, memory, decision making, making and motivation. Chronic use is linked to declines in IQ, school performance that jeopardize professional and social achievements and life satisfactions. Regular use of marijuana in adolescence is linked to increased rates of school absence and dropout as well as suicide attempts. I would like to respectfully recommend that as decision makers and responsible adults, you do whatever is necessary to provide teens and young adults with appropriate marijuana prevention information so that the only education they receive does not come from the marijuana businesses. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Good night.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, our next caller is the caller with phone number ending in 1822. Caller, if you'd please state your name and the spelling.
Hi, this is Peggy Walker. I work in youth drug use prevention education. One more comment regarding marijuana, if you'll bear with me. I just wanted to say that I just read about the new required auditing fee for the city's medical pot dispensaries and I believe it is well justified considering the significant staff and regulatory burdens and costs these businesses place on the city. And there's another reason. Measures Z force these businesses on the city and while they are deemed medical and require a medical card for purchase, these medical cards are readily available to almost anybody who wants one. In fact, online services like Where's Weed actually lists North County doctors near Vista who will readily provide medical cards. This is very convenient and because it's so easy, it gives one pause to believe that at least perhaps some buyers with a medical card in reality are recreational buyers and that a great deal of products sold is sold for recreational, not medical use. Recreational use is generally taxed at a higher rate. And so with this in mind and for that reason, I believe the auditing fee is a very good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker is Kelly McCormick. Kelly, you could go ahead and start.
Hi, this is Kelly McCormick. I'm the parent of two teenagers and I was interested in your comments tonight about the school closures, I mean, because so many of us are facing that same situation. Um, I know I am with my kids as well. And I'm concerned about access to marijuana by teenagers and I'm hearing the same thing from other parents whose kids are at home unsupervised while the parents go back to work. An NBC News Los Angeles investigation revealed that both unpermitted and permitted marijuana delivery drivers have left pot with underage buyers without checking for their IDs. Commercialization has made pot more appealing than ever. And according to Sandag's Criminal Justice Clearing House, only 17% of juvenile arrestees thought of marijuana as harmful. Did you know the average age of first use was only 12 and a half? That's shocking. Yet the science is clear that the period of time up to age 25 is critical for their brain development. Young brains can become hardwired for addiction and by changing brain chemistry, teens who use marijuana can experience higher rates of depression, anxiety and suicidal ideation, a situation made all the worse by the pandemic that we're in right now. The majority of these same teens who live in our county have vaped high THC marijuana. This is a highly potent concentrated form that can be upwards of 90% THC. This is radically different from 20 years ago when a joint was maybe one to 3% THC. Our young people are being exploited by the marijuana industry and I'm sad to say that we'll see the harm in years to come, just as we have with the tobacco industry. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, and our next speaker is, um, Rap, Becky Rebecca Rap.
Good evening, Vista City Council and Mayor. My name is Becky Rap. I'm a parent to three teenagers and a youth group mentor. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for approving the fee increase on marijuana outlets. A recent Reader Magazine article describes the tax situation for Vista pot shops stating how it's not a surprise that not one Vista dispensary wants to divulge their monthly tax payment to the city. Based on income generated from pot shops, the new auditing fee is a fair price to pay to own and operate a marijuana outlet. Marijuana outlets need to be held accountable. If the city needs an auditing and accounting program to do it, then moving forward was the appropriate thing to do. It's not a secret that the state of California is cultivating 10 times the amount of pot it can consume. Growers and dispensaries are undoubtedly sending their pot out of state. Did you know that pot sold out of the state? Buyers will pay up to three times the amount that they will pay in a state where it is legal. I would also like to remind you that marijuana is a cash-only business. For these reasons, I congratulate you on increasing the fees to cover the important auditing and accounting procedure and encourage you to also put money into education and other important avenues that will help our youth combat this new drug that is becoming more normalized every day. I hope other cities will follow your lead. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes, um, oral communication. We'll go ahead and close opportunity for oral communication at this time.
Okay, so, um, with that, we will move on then to our remarks and I will start to do my remarks and then I'll go to each council member to give theirs. So my are, we have good news for parents. Recreation has extended the weekly summer day camp program at Bringle Terrace through September 4. Day camps are open for children and youth grades eight, kindergarten through eight. Register online at vista recreation dot com. And beginning this week, the city is also running day camps at the Wave through September 4. To register for a weekly camp at the Wave, visit the wave water park dot com. And one other thing, thanks to our Vista senior services team for providing healthy lunches and dinners to seniors in need. Oh, I'm covering myself up with a paper. Thanks to our Vista senior services team for providing healthy lunches and dinners to seniors in need. Since the beginning of public health crisis, the senior meals program has provided 12,668 nutritional meals for seniors. Additionally, the new weekend meal program we started in July brought 80 new seniors into the program. So we want to thank our Vista senior services for what they're doing to help us through the COVID crisis here. So with that, I will go out, go through all the different city council members. I'll start with, um, Councilmember Contreras.
Well, thank you so much. Again, a lovely, uh, meeting. Um, you know, it's nice to see everybody. I know we didn't get to see one another at a council meeting for a month, so this is great. Um, I do want to say, just like always, I have a weekly trash pickup. Uh, we gather at Luz Duran Park at 9:00 AM. Bring your mask, uh, bring some water to drink. Um, and by about 9:10, 9:15, depending on how much talking we're doing, uh, we start, we roll out and we start walking the neighborhood and we do anywhere between one and a half to three miles. Um, so we're usually done by around 11:30-ish. Um, so if you can't make it for the full time, we can accommodate you. Uh, but I look forward to seeing, uh, some individuals, uh, tomorrow. And, um, you know, I didn't want to discuss it for, like, have an actual discussion about it, but, um, we do get a lot of comments, uh, concerning, uh, youth and adolescent use of cannabis. And so, um, I don't know if we could get some data from Vista Unified School District to show, you know, are we seeing increases in absenteeism? Are we seeing decreases in graduation rates? Um, simply because, uh, I want to say it was about a year ago that I went to a school board meeting and our graduation rates were going up. So I just want to see, you know, if there's some kind of data that we can look at, um, just to have, be more informed as a council moving forward. So that's pretty much all I have to say. I hope everybody has a wonderful day and rest of the night and I don't know if anybody's going to partake in a Taco Tuesday today or not. Uh, but thanks again to all my colleagues. Again, it's, it's a pleasure to, to be here, uh, having these really robust discussions and to see everybody's beautiful face today, so.
How about Councilmember Green?
Unmuted, thank you so much, Madam Mayor. And yes, thank you to my colleagues. It's fantastic to see you guys. I love, uh, hearing what's on your mind and hearing how you kind of go through the issues and, uh, just really looking forward to moving forward and keeping working with you. I want to thank our firefighters, our public works, senior services, all of our employees down at City Hall, front office, sheriffs, parks and recs people. We still have a lot of city staff out there working every day to keep Vista moving forward, working really hard, um, you know, with their masks on, you know, taking advantage of social distancing, but, uh, a lot of Vista workers out there working, moving Vista forward. So from, from a council member who, uh, you know, gets the good and the bad, I just want to say thank you guys so much for everything you're doing. Um, Vista looks fantastic and it's because of all of you guys and you guys are smiling under those masks. I know it. Your eyes show smiles. So thank you, city of Vista workers and whatever department you're in. You're greatly appreciated and our community appreciates you. Thank you.
Councilmember Franklin?
Thanks to my colleagues for a great discussion as always and thanks to all of our great staff, uh, who've been doing a great job during the crisis, keeping everything going. We appreciate you.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to echo my colleagues, uh, during this time that we have been separated in these Zoom meetings and, and not just for city council, but for other areas of our lives, it hasn't been easy for people. It hasn't been easy for staff. It hasn't been easy for, for us. And I want to say thank you to everybody for working so hard to make sure that the city is still moving, the city is still working, is still responsive to our community. And it hasn't been easy, but thank you for your patience and your grace and hearing how some of the changes for the firefighters and the paramedics and how they work with their calls and their patients. Uh, that has got to be very difficult sometimes and I appreciate, uh, I appreciate them very much for that. Public Works, Code Enforcement, uh, Senior Center, I was out there handing out some, some meals a while back with that. And the seniors are so grateful that they're still able to get their meals. And I know that we offer delivery service and I hope that more people hear about that and sign up for it. So I just want to say during this time of everything so up in the air and back and forth and from one day to the next, you're not sure which direction that we're going as a county and, and what will happen. But we're all working together, we're all making it happen and I appreciate everybody and thank you very much.
City Manager Patrick?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just one item. Uh, yesterday, the traffic was shift on Paseo Santa Fe from the south side to the north side. Uh, or actually they're doing work on the north side, so the traffic was shifted to the south side. So it means that if you're traveling on Civic Center and you're going southbound, you're able to make a right turn onto Paseo Santa Fe. However, if you're driving northbound on Civic Center, you're going to need to take a Palavist, the detour, uh, to get back to South Santa Fe. But the project is anticipated to be completed by the end of the year. Uh, the contractor is doing very well with this project and it's exciting to see the developments. So I just want to let you know that.
How about our city attorney, Darryl Piper?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to add this evening.
Okay, how about our city clerk, Kathy Valdez? Do you have anything?
Anything, yeah, thank you.
Okay, with that, it's good to see everybody back again and I will see you again in a couple of weeks. We are now adjourned.